For teachers and other employees, Section two point two dash three seven one one two, discussion of matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning students.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Lynn. All any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are now in closed session.
Welcome to our November 11th school board meeting. We are going to go back into open session and I'll take a motion.
I move to return to open session.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? We are now in open session. Okay, now looking for a certification for the closed meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to certify the closed meeting. The Board will certify the following. Whereas the Hanover County School Board has convened closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmation recorded, voted in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hanover County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, if you'll, we are going to sit, I'm going to do the invocation and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance following directly after that by Ashley Godwin from the Hanover Centers for Trades and Technology. Do you please stand?
Loving and gracious God, we come before you with grateful hearts on this Veterans Day to honor the men and women who have served our beautiful country. We pray for their strength and courage and for your peace to guide them through any trials they face. We ask for your healing to mend the wounds seen and unseen that they may carry, grant comfort to their families, and give eternal rest to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. We pray that you will bless them for their unselfish service and the continual struggle to preserve our freedoms, our safety, and our country's heritage for all of us. Lord, help us to never forget their sacrifices and to always show our gratitude. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, um, now we are gonna have a approval of the minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a move, motion, excuse me, to approve the minutes for the recently held meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Um, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lynn. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um, we are doing a little bit of a change up. Um, and I gotta get my stuff together. Okay. Good evening and happy Veterans Day. It is both an honor and a privilege to sit on this board with wonderful people. Tonight I would like to take a moment and honor three of our board members for their service. If you will please stand when I call you. First, our Vice Chair, Captain Greg Coleman, U.S. Air Force. Thanks, Steve. Um, retired Major Robert Seifert, uh, U.S. Air Force. And also Senior Airman William D. Schroff, U.S. Air Force. Dr. Schroff? Dr. Schroff is not with us tonight due to an accident and is recovering at home. We wish him a swift recovery and less pain. Thank you for your service in our country and please remain, uh, standing. I know we have some veterans, um, in our audience tonight and I would like to ask for you to please stand. Thank you very much. You can be seated. Today, on the 11th day of the 11th month, we honor Americans veterans, all who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. Our veterans come from every corner of the country and from all walks of life. They are our neighbors, our teachers, our first responders, board members, and our family members. They share a common commitment to an ideal larger than themselves, serving in times of peace and conflict. American veterans made a brave and selfish choice to serve with sacrifice. They missed holidays, spent time away from home and loved ones. Because of their willingness to serve and sacrifice their lives for strangers, our nation remains free, secure, and prosperous. Let us remember, we the citizens, share in the duty to protect the democracy and freedoms they defended. To all who have served, our soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, national and coast guardsmen, past and present, we simply say, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for your service, your courage, your sacrifice, and your unwavering commitment to our country. Thank you to your families for their support. May God bless you and God bless America. We have been celebrating and honoring our country's veterans today and over the past week in our schools. From musical performance to breakfast to classroom lessons, every school participated in paying tribute to our heroes. So I want to congratulate our school system for making, making this come alive in our school system. Okay, and, um, we are gonna move on to our senior showcase. I do wanna mention before we, um, do that, that, um, uh, Dr. Shelp had a previously planned trip, um, out of the country and so that's why he is not here today. So, thank you. Okay. Mr. Whitley? Do you have like six or seven?
You're stealing my punchline. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It is always a privilege to bring forth the great news and accomplishments of our students and staff. We have, uh, over six or seven tonight that, uh, probably more that we'd like to recognize, but you're right, this is our first ever, uh, inaugural senior showcase, and what a joy that is to recognize these folks behind me. So, as I said, uh, for the recognitions tonight, first up, I'm pleased to introduce our first ever senior showcase. We will highlight one senior from each high school who models the Hanover County Public Schools values: inspire, empower, and lead. We are also highlighting one senior from each high school who models our focus on kindness. Finally, one senior from the Hanover Center for Trades and Technology will be recognized for their excellence in work-based readiness and teamwork. Our high school principals will introduce each student being recognized tonight. First up is Atlee High School. Dr. Wheeler, take it away.
Members of the Board, Dr. Penikoff, senior staff, uh, it is a pleasure to be with you on this Veterans Day. The first senior I would like to showcase tonight is someone who embodies kindness. So if Katie Rogers would join me right up here, please. Throughout her four years at Atlee High School, Katie Rogers has quietly but powerfully embodies what it means to lead with kindness. Whether she is welcoming new students with a warm smile, offering encouragement to classmates who are struggling, or volunteering her time to support school and community events, she consistently goes out of her way to include others. Her nature allows her to sense when others need support and she always offers it without expecting anything in return. As a student leader, Katie models patience and respect, listening carefully to different perspectives and helping her peers find common ground during group projects or club meetings. Her teachers praise her reliability and positive attitude, noting that she lifts the classroom atmosphere simply by being present. Katie Rogers is someone who listens deeply, celebrates other successes, and treats everyone with respect. Her friends say she has a gift for making people feel seen and valued. Katie reminds us that kindness isn't just an action, it is a way of life. When Raider Nation thinks of our school division's kindness initiative, we think of students like Katie Rogers. Congratulations. Next up is someone who embodies and empower, inspire, and lead, and that is Senior Juliana Hoppy. She'll come up and join you. There are some students you will just remember long after they leave your classroom. They are both leaders and learners, strong communicators and listeners, knowledgeable and curious, as well as patient and compassionate. They overcome even the most difficult obstacles. Juliana Hoppy, affectionately known as Juju by her friends and teammates, is one of the students who walks into our classroom full of ideas, emotions, and a desire to make a difference. For the past four years she has spent at Atlee High School, Juliana has changed us for the better. What is perhaps Juliana's most endearing quality is her compassion for others. She demonstrates levels of compassion, inspiration, and leadership that compares to none. She knows when others are frustrated, angry, or excited, and demonstrates a mature empathy that is most impressive. Juliana is a leader in the truest sense of the word, in the classroom, as president of DECA, in Young Life, National Honor Society, SOTA, and on the field hockey and lacrosse teams. She is also a full IB diploma candidate. Juliana Hoppy continuously thrives in any situation, making Atlee High School a better place. Senior Juliana Hoppy. At this time, I would like to ask my colleague, Ms. Christina Reese, to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board, Dr. Penikoff, and Senior Staff. I am honored to be here tonight to celebrate two incredible Hawks. I'm gonna start with Marcus Bika. Please come up here, Marcus. Tonight we are, tonight we are thrilled to shine our spotlight on Marcus Bika. He's a dedicated, persistent, goal-oriented leader from Hanover High School, whose commitment embodies the values of inspire, empower, and lead. Marcus is truly exceptional student who is selected as the recipient of the Hanover High School Citizenship Award. Marcus's impact on our school community is significant, particularly through his commitment to leadership and civic engagement. He initiated and founded our Model UN Club at Hanover High School and has served as a dedicated leader for the past three years, actively inspiring his peers in global politics and diplomacy. This year, his high academic achievements and civic involvement were further recognized with the UVA Jefferson Book Award. Furthermore, Marcus has shown immense dedication to STEM and healthcare as the president of HOSA for Future Health Professionals, where he works to empower his fellow students in pursuing health science careers. His persistence has paid off. He has won many awards at the local and national level through HOSA competitions. In closing, we celebrate Marcus Bika for his outstanding dedication to inspire, empower, lead, and truly embodying the spirit of Hanover High School. Congratulations, Marcus. Hannah Grace? She's fresh off the, um, basketball court. She looks fantastic. Um, this is Hannah Grace Daniel. Tonight we are delighted to shine our senior spotlight on her. She is a truly exceptional student and athlete whose dedication to kindness illuminates our entire school community. Hannah Grace consistently brings a radiant sense of positivity to every group and activity that she joins. Her character is defined by her hard-working na- nature, patience, and empathy, traits that have been formally recognized through winning the Social Studies Character Award, the High Point University Book Award, and the High Point Junior Scholar Award this year at Hanover High School. Hannah Grace actively shares her passion for service and youth development by coaching at Cursey Creek, volunteering at various youth camps, and serving as an HYBL coach. She also leads her peers as the president of the Speak Up Club and is committed to, a committed member of both the Beta and NHS chapters at Hanover High School. Hannah Grace demonstrates kindness daily in her interactions with both peers and staff, a quality that will undoubtedly serve her well as she pursues her dream of becoming an elementary school teacher, hopefully here in Hanover. Congratulations, Hannah Grace. I can give you a copy. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Brandon Petrowski, the Principal for Mechanicsville High School.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Members of the Board, Dr. Penikoff, Senior Staff, thank you for this opportunity to recognize two of our magnificent Mustangs. First, I'd like to recognize Mason Santini. Mason, please come up.
Mason is a student that makes kindness look effortless. His considerate character defines every space he enters, whether it's in his classroom, a hallway, and even on the wrestling mat. No matter what type of day he's experiencing, he always chooses to treat others with patience and respect. Mason's, Mason's conduct is consistently admirable. Even in the heat of competition, his exemplary sportsmanship stands out. He competes with determination and a passion while always showing respect for his opponents. The instant a match ends, he transitions back to being that calm and ease-and-going person, which is a tremendous reflection of his inner strength. Mason demonstrates kindness without seeking attention or reward, simply stepping in to help because it's the right thing to do. Many adults in our building will comment to me about Mason's behavior in this regard. For example, after making this election, the gymnastics coach came to make sure that I know, that I knew, that she'd noted his constant willingness to help her, their team set up for practice, including motivating the other wrestlers to help. They're exhausted, they're sweaty, and Mason's moving them to move the mats. He is quietly dependable, supportive of his peers, and never expects anything in return. His kindness is consistently felt by those around him. Combined with his focus as a dedicated and hard-working student, his consistent character makes him a powerful role model for others, both as an athlete and a student. Mason, thank you for sharing your kindness and your gifts with us. Next, I'd like to acknowledge Kalen Ball. Kalen truly is the best definition of inspiration at MHS. She's a model student who genuinely brightens our halls just by walking through them with that perpetual smile. I can't see her right now, but I bet she's smiling. Yep, yep, there it is. But you should also know that she's a seriously competitive gymnast. On weekends, she's not resting, she's traveling all over the country, competing in world-class, um, gymnastic competitions. That means she's putting in work every single day at her elite gym across town in Chesterfield, right? Uh, Midlothian. So that kind of demanding schedule, where she's been able to excel in a world-class sport while still keeping up with her academics, is remarkable. She makes it look effortless, which is amazing when you know the countless hours and extreme dedication she pours into everything else that she's doing. What's more inspiring than her athletic skill and accomplishments are her grades and her character. She has this unwavering determination for treating every single person with respect. She's consistently kind to everyone, and she's a powerful advocate and is always willing to stand up for herself and others. Ask anyone in the school counseling office, she's a constant source of positivity as one of our lead student ambassadors. You talk to her for five minutes and she's instantly made your day brighter. Her commitment to MHS pride is legendary. If you've been to one of my football games, you have heard Kalen. All right, she's, she is our loudest, most enthusiastic fan. Her accomplishments are many, but her spirit is what truly sets her apart. MHS is extremely proud of her and all she's achieved, and we can all agree, she's truly an inspiration to our community. Thank you, Kalen.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to welcome the principal that thinks red, white, and blue is always about Patrick Henry, uh, Mr. Christopher Martinez.
Thank you, Brandon. All right, uh, members of the Board, Dr. Penikoff, Senior Staff, uh, I am extremely excited to be here to, uh, celebrate, uh, two of our amazing seniors. I am extremely excited to be here to celebrate two of our amazing seniors. We're very blessed at PH in the West to, you know, be the best, and it's exemplified in the two seniors we're going to recognize this evening. First up for us is Ms. Claire Ellis, who was nominated by our very own Mrs. Evans. So Claire. So who is Claire Ellis? Claire is truly someone who embodies the HCPS motto of to inspire, empower, and lead. And she particularly stands Uh-oh. Okay. At Patrick Henry High School and in her community. Claire is an international baccalaureate candidate who also takes AP classes. She's always maintaining strong academic performance despite taking the most challenging courses that PH has to offer. Her dedication extends beyond academics, and her selection as a junior marshal by the faculty and staff of PH stands as a true testament to her leadership and character. Claire serves as one of the editors-in-chief for the Patrick Henry Yearbook Program and is president of our Student Government Association. She continuously participates and plans the events that benefit our school and community. She is an active member and captain of both the golf and tennis teams. She gives back to her community through service organizations, such as the National Arms Society, the National Beta Club, Hanover U Service Council, Hope Squad, Key Club, and One Small Chance. She continuously pushes herself to lead by example. Claire demonstrates integrity, honesty, and respect in every aspect of her life, inspiring everyone around her to do the same. She doesn't just represent the HCPS motto. She defines what true leadership looks like through her actions, dedication, and the positive influence she has on others. Claire's ability to lead with compassion, confidence, and humility inspires not only her peers, but also the adults who have the privilege of working alongside her. Congratulations, Claire. For our next recognition, I would also like Ms. Allison DeSilva to come up here with me as well. So for our next recognition, I will be reading it in English, and then Mr. Silva will be reading it in Spanish. She's our World Languages Curriculum Specialist and ESL teacher. So I need Carla Herrera to come up here with us. Carla was nominated by our very own Mrs. Yeney. Carla is an exceptional and deserving student who truly embodies the quality of inspire. She inspires her teachers and peers alike with her fierce ambition, boundless curiosity, and genuine passion for learning. Whether tackling challenging concepts or exploring new ideas, Carla approaches every opportunity with enthusiasm and a desire to grow, not only for her own benefit, but to uplift those around her as well. She empowers others through her actions and her voice. She takes initiative, encourages her classmates to participate, and creates an inclusive environment where everyone feels valued. One of the most powerful examples of this came when she volunteered to read the school news in Spanish during Hispanic Heritage Month. Although she was not enrolled in a TV production class, Carla recognized the importance of cultural representation and courageously stepped forward to share her heritage with the school community. Her willingness to do so helped make newly arrived Spanish-speaking students feel seen, safe, and welcome, an act that reflects her deep empathy and commitment to others. As a leader, Carla sets the standard through her integrity, positivity, and determination. Her peers naturally looked for her for guidance, drawn by her authenticity and calm confidence. She leads not by demanding attention, but by earning respect through her actions and her unwavering kindness. Carla's compassion is at the heart of everything she does. Her thoughtfulness, generosity, and respect for others have left a lasting mark on our school. I am immensely proud of how much she has grown during her four years at PH. There is no doubt that she will continue to make a positive impact wherever she goes. When she graduates this spring, she will leave PH a little better and brighter than it was when she first arrived. Her kindness, leadership, and spirit are contagious and has been an absolute honor to be her principal and Ms. Yeney, her teacher, for the past three years.
Carla es un estudiante excepcional y muy merecedora que realmente encarna la característica de inspirar. Inspira tanto a sus maestros como a sus compañeros con su gran ambición, su curiosidad sin límites y su pasión por aprender. Ya sea enfrentando nuevos retos o explorando ideas diferentes, Carla toma cada oportunidad con entusiasmo y con un deseo constante de crecer, no solo por su propio beneficio, sino también para elevar a quienes la rodean. Carla empodera a los demás a través de sus acciones y su voz. Toma la iniciativa, motiva a sus compañeros a participar, y crea un ambiente inclusivo en el que todos se sienten valorados. Un ejemplo poderoso de esto fue cuando se ofreció voluntariamente para leer las noticias escolares en español durante el mes de la herencia hispana. Aunque no formaba parte de la clase de televisión, Carla reconoció la importancia de la representación cultural y valientemente dio un paso al frente para compartir su herencia con toda la comunidad escolar. Su disposición para hacerlo ayudó a que los nuevos estudiantes hispanohablantes se sintieran vistos, seguros, y bienvenidos, demostrando la empatía y la compasión que forman parte esencial de quién es ella. Como líder, Carla marca un ejemplo con su integridad, su positividad, y su determinación. Sus compañeros naturalmente le acudan a ella en busca de orientación, atraídos por su autenticidad y su confianza tranquila. Lidera no buscando atención, sino ganándose el respeto a través de sus acciones y su amabilidad constante. La compasión de Carla está en el corazón de todo lo que hace. Su consideración, generosidad, y respeto hacia los demás han dejado una huella duradera en nuestra escuela. Su profesora de inglés, Ms. Yeney, dijo: "Estoy inmensamente orgullosa de cuánto ha crecido durante sus cuatro años en el colegio Patrick Henry. No tengo duda de que continuará dejando una huella positiva donde quiera que vaya." Cuando se gradúe esta primavera, dejará la escuela un poco mejor y más brillante de lo que era cuando llegó. Su amabilidad, liderazgo, y espíritu son contagiosos, y ha sido un verdadero honor ser su maestra durante esos tres años. Felicidades, Carla.
Big smile. Congratulations.
Now, I will be passing it off to Mr. Roring, the Principal of the Hanover Center for Trades and Technology, to highlight yet another patriot.
That is a tough act to follow. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Penikov, Senior Staff. I'm excited we all recognize a fantastic senior at the Hanover Center for Trades and Technology, Ashley Godwin. If you could please join me. Over the past two years at the Hanover Center for Trades and Technology, Ashley has truly embodied the workplace readiness trait of teamwork. Whether in the classroom, during hands-on practice, or while preparing for state board exams, Ashley's focus has always extended beyond her own success to the success of those around her. Every day, Ashley begins with a clear focus on meeting her own goals, and once she achieves them, she immediately turns her attention to supporting her classmates. She is always available to offer guidance, stepping in to help when her cosmetology teacher is assisting another student or when a peer asks for advice. Ashley consistently offers a helping hand and demonstrates genuine care for ensuring that every student reaches their daily objectives. Her teamwork extends even further when classmates are absent. Ashley takes the time to help them catch up by explaining lessons, demonstrating techniques, and making sure they feel confident and included. Her generosity with her time and knowledge is a reflection of her dedication to shared success. A talented hair braider, Ashley frequently teaches others how to perfect their technique, sharing her skills patiently and enthusiastically. During recent state board licensure exam preparations, Ashley once again demonstrated her commitment to teamwork. After completing her own work, she immediately began helping others without needing to be asked, ensuring her classmates were equally prepared and confident. Ashley's ability to uplift, support, and inspire those around her has made her an invaluable part of the Hanover Center for Trades and Technology community. As she prepares to pursue a full-time career in cosmetology after graduation, we have no doubt that she will continue to bring teamwork, dedication, and compassion to everything she does. We are thrilled to recognize Ashley in the senior showcase for exemplifying the workplace readiness trait of teamwork.
That concludes our senior showcases for now. We have others to come throughout the school year. How about one more round of applause for our wonderful seniors? Our final recognition, which is very timely on Veterans Day, goes to Patrick Henry High School, who recently earned the Purple Star Award. This award recognizes schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's armed forces by implementing military-friendly practices. Hanover County Public Schools currently enrolls 260 military-connected students. This is the third time that Patrick Henry has earned this distinction. Will all representatives from Patrick Henry please come forward at this time to be recognized?
Again, congratulations to everyone. And we're going to take a moment if you would like to leave, or you're more than welcome to stay. Okay. Thank you, you all, for staying. I appreciate that. We are going to go into Board Member Announcements now, and I think Mr. Martin will start with you.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to first shout out Dr. Strove, who had an unfortunate incident and is, I'm sure, tuning in at home. We wish you well and a speedy recovery to get back here with us. Also, wanted to echo the Veterans Day sentiments. I've been on the Board a little over a year now, and the two days that I've been on for Veterans Day have made this experience incredible. Our school division across the Board goes out of its way to make our veterans feel appreciated and loved for their service. So I'm just very grateful to our division for what the time and attention that is shown on Veterans Day. And a happy Veterans Day to my fellow Board members. As you noticed, I didn't stand up at the beginning when they were being recognized, and they like to remind me of that. But I have a lot of love and respect for our veterans. I wanted to, the other announcement was about our bus driver appreciation. Schools across the county celebrated our bus drivers during National School Bus Safety Week. From goodie bags to thank-you notes, recognition was given to these hard-working and tremendous members of the Hanover County Public Schools family, who were able to soak in the gratitude. In addition to Bus Safety Week, some of our bus drivers participated in the annual Bus Rodeo, a friendly competition at Mechanicsville High School for drivers to show off their driving skills. Fellow bus drivers and family members cheer them on as they traverse the course. So thank you to our bus drivers, a often underappreciated part of our operation, but very critical, and we are very grateful for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, Ms. Lynn?
I have two. As part of Bullying Prevention Month, students and staff participated in Unity Day. Unity Day is the signature event of the special month and is celebrated by wearing orange. The day was one of many activities that our schools participated in during Bullying Prevention Month to show that we are united against bullying. And my second one is students from all four middle schools attended Mission Tomorrow at the Richmond Raceway.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Mr. Seifert, did you have any? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Yeah, I've got a couple here. I had the opportunity to go to the Ag Day Field Trip at the Virginia State Fairground, my first time seeing that, and just an awesome event. I saw Dr. Penikov there and saw Wayne Gilchrist, our Science Director, out there, actually teaching a lesson on soil out there, and just a lot of interesting things for the kids to see. And it's so nice when they can see things, you know, for real, you know, out there versus the classroom all the time. So love to see the field trips, especially good ones like that. I also, I'm sorry, the principals have left, but I had the privilege of going to the Laurel Meadow Elementary School and Hanover High School Veterans Day ceremonies. Principals Brad Davis and Chris Reese, just an amazing job with those ceremonies and really meant a lot to the veterans and, you know, teaches the students a lot, I think. So that was great. And the last thing I'll say, I had the privilege of going to the Support Employee of the Year Dinner, and that was really a nice event. It's the 2025 Support Employee of the Year. So, you know, many individuals. And special thanks to the Hanover Education Foundation. Hopefully, everybody realizes how much they do for Hanover County Schools and Melissa Haley, who oversees that. Just, they couldn't be more generous. And the overall winner for the Support Employee of the Year was Mindy Muntin, an administrative assistant in the central office, was named the 2425 Hanover County Public School Support Employee of the Year this spring. So big congratulations to her. Lots of amazing people. She rose to the top of that amazing group. So congratulations to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. And I see a beautiful lady in the back, Ms. Ola Hawkins, and I just wanted to recognize that she is with us tonight. Thank you so much for being here. Nice to see you.
Thank you. I wanted to also, this is the last recognition, I think, but Ms. Avanti Yamamoto, a senior teacher at Liberty Middle School, was recognized last month with a certificate of special congressional recognition by Congressman Rob Whitman for being named the 2025 Virginia Teacher of the Year. the Year. We were joined by members of the Hanover County Board of Supervisors, Virginia General Assembly, and School Division Administration for Ms. Yamamoto receiving this special recognition, which is part of the official congressional record prior to a tour of liberty. It was an amazing event. It was very cool. She is, she is a pretty special person, and her passion for, yes, math, comes out when she talks and when she speaks to you. So, congratulations to her once again. So, thank you.
We are now going to go to our consent agenda, and I am looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. And now we have our instructional highlight, and we are going to learn more about the kindness campaign.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Pennykuff, we are here today to bring you our instructional highlight, which I think is going to become the theme for the evening. So, we are ready to share with you some of our early efforts around our kindness campaign. Why kindness? I thought I was going to need to give a whole spiel about why we need to be kind, and I think that I'm just going to pass the rest of the presentation off, because I think it's been evident in everything that our principals said already tonight, in the ways that we have been engaging with each other, and just the start of the school year has just been phenomenal. So, I love that this has been an area of focus for our school board, and that they pass that along to staff, and I'm very proud to share with you what we've done with it.
Yeah, thank you. And what an incredible setup we just had right before this, right? The highlighting of the students, which of course is why we're here. So, one of the things we want to talk about is what our school is doing in terms of programs and professional development. So, early on, you heard me during the work session talk about anti-bullying disability awareness, that this is training that is happening between myself and Lisa Nguyen and Jamie Hanks with every school faculty. We are having conversations about what it's like when students are mistreated, and what we should be doing as a faculty to step in and make sure that's not happening, so our classrooms and our schools are welcoming and safe for our students. We've had incredible conversations that, again, are happening with every faculty at every school. Additionally, all of our schools have the bully button, as you've heard in shorthand, but stand up, speak out now, so that any of our students, anywhere, anytime they have access to the internet, has a button on their school's webpage that's also on all of their Chromebooks, that if they feel that they are seeing the mistreatment of others or being mistreated, they can report that at any time. Schools have 24 hours to jump on that, to reach out to those families and say, "We know what's going on, and we're working on that problem right now." So, we've created this button in the last few years. There's additional resources that all of our schools and all of our students have access to through counseling and counseling services, so that we can be on top of making our schools as kind as they can possibly be. Additionally, all of our schools now have an MTSS team, a multi-tiered system of support. They're working directly on creating expectations, understanding what the behavior looks like in that particular school for those kids, and teaching them, and whether that's through the house system or grade-level meetings. This is something that is in all of our schools now, so that every student entering that building knows what the expectations for that building are. They're being taught, they're being looked at again, and generally speaking, schools are meeting multi-times a year to talk about, what does it look like so far, and how can we be the best that we can be?
So, what does this look like in our schools, right? So, similar to Veterans Day and how every single one of our schools participated, every school is offering kindness-themed activities, lessons, celebrations, read aloud, frankly, it's everywhere. And it looks in a lot of different ways, and we're going to walk you through some examples of that here shortly. Through a partnership with Ms. Jenny Bonnell, we've distributed dozens of the legendary Be Kind signs, that you probably see around the community. At Bell Creek Middle School, Mr. Martin, you referenced it earlier, students are leading, it's entirely student-led, a program where students nominate their peers, and then Bell Creek recognizes those who receive multiple nominations through a special celebration every month, and every student who does receive a nomination is still displayed on the cafeteria monitor for people to still celebrate. But from the nominations, to the speeches, to the invitations, everything is entirely student-led. At Hanover High School, students learned how to make flower bouquets, and then presented them as an act of kindness to their favorite teachers. At Mechanicsville High School, students wrote positive, kind notes to teachers during lunch, and in exchange, got a bag of popcorn. And more than 500 students participated in that initiative. Again, it looks, it plays out in different ways. At PH, it might look like in a Level 4 English learner student, who knows English a little bit better than his peers, volunteering to be a teacher assistant for the remainder of the school year to help younger English learners and give back in that way. At Atlee High School, I love this one, students created a bingo kindness edition, so the entire bingo board is just acts of kindness, and then students can try and complete the different activities and get kindness in exchange for service hours and giving back to teachers that way. As a communications team, we've launched the Be the Eye in Kind social media campaign, so where students, staff members are recognized by those in the community for really putting kindness into action. We go around to the schools, we take a picture, we put it on social media, and we're going to walk you through a few examples of that.
So, we have a few testimonials that we're each going to read, and this is for Beth Ramy, Ramy, excuse me, first-grade teacher at Pearson's Corner Elementary School. Her nominator said, "Ms. Ramy puts the eye in kind because she personally embodies kindness in everything she does. She doesn't just teach kindness as a concept, she lives it. By always greeting her students with a smile, making each child feel loved and valued, and encouraging them to treat one another with care, she shows that kindness starts with her own actions and attitude. Her genuine kindness creates a warm, positive atmosphere where every student feels important and inspired to share that kindness with others."
I'd like to introduce you to Leah, a middle school student. Her nominator said, "Leah was very kind and welcoming to a new student that joined our class recently. She helped her understand class procedures, catch up on material she missed, and most of all, has been supportive, inclusive, and generous. She is a great role model of kindness for her peers."
And this is Amber DePass, a fifth-grade teacher at Battlefield Park Elementary School. Her nominator, a parent, said, "My daughter's fifth-grade teacher, Mr. DePass, has truly put the eye in kind. From day one, she has created a classroom culture rooted in respect, empathy, and encouragement. She explains topics clearly, responds with patience and understanding, and always seeks solutions rather than placing blame. Because of her, my daughter's confidence has blossomed. She's becoming more responsible, completing assignments independently at school and at home, and most importantly, she looks forward to coming to class every day to learn new things. This teacher's kindness has not only impacted my daughter academically, but emotionally. She feels seen, supported, and capable. That kind of transformation doesn't happen by accident, it happens because of a teacher who leads with heart. I wholeheartedly nominate this incredible educator for recognition. She exemplifies what it means to be kind, and her impact on my daughter's life this year is something that we are thankful for." So, those are several nominations of the more than 200 that we've received so far, but really, there's no better testament to kindness than smiles. So, we're going to take a look at some of the joy from our schools already this school year, and every picture you see is the result of one of the different kindness activities in our schools.
So, thank you for inspiring us to do this work. I think, while I recognize the value of a hashtag, I hope that everyone in our schools feels that it's so much more than that. It's truly the way that we're operating this year. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? I see a little bit of some tears. I know, I was tearing up. I love seeing these kids smiling faces, and y'all have done all the heavy lifting, and, you know, I think it's an amazing campaign that we have going on, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hahn. Sorry, I lost my place.
That's all right. Excuse me. What you have before you for first read is an update to our policy 4-3.5 that deals with educational facility specifications. There has been legislation that came out from the General Assembly that created several new code sections, addressing things such as indoor air quality, necessary inspections of school facilities, things like that. So, what we have done is we have updated this policy to reflect those new requirements, but also to provide some clarity on the design, how we do the design and construction of facilities, who we, you know, who we talk to, the processes that we go through. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. This is on for first read, you don't need to do anything with it. You will see it again at the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Do we have any questions for Ms. Hahn? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Middle School Athletics and Activities Expansion. Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm stepping in for Ms. Brittany Moore. She gave this update to the board during its work session earlier, so I'm going to hit the highlights and certainly jump in and ask me any questions, or if I skip anything that you think the general public would like to hear. So, one of the other priorities of the school division coming from our school board is to make sure that we had opportunities for students at middle school to participate in athletic and physical activities, as well as to have opportunities to participate in other types of activities that are maybe less physical. And so, the conversation has been ongoing and robust. During the summer of 2025, we started working in earnest to get a different approach to some sports in the region. And so, currently, we are a partner with Henrico in the MSAC, and that is an organization that has existed for a very long time, but the bylaws themselves had not been touched in quite a while. Hanover had an interest in expanding into other sports for middle school, but there wasn't a provision in the MSAC handbook to have that happen. And so, Ms. Moore took that request to MSAC, and we are excited to say that there is now a process within MSAC to identify an emerging sport. In Hanover, that interest has revolved around cross-country. Because of the diligence of Ms. Moore, we have been able to get ahead of the process a little bit, which would typically take 12 to 18 months. Ms. Moore has submitted the necessary paperwork for budget considerations for all of you for later this week and into the next few months, because with expansion for cross-country comes additional resources that we're going to need to make that successful here in our division. So, the emerging sport can be introduced by any principal. They have to have four other, four total schools who are interested, and then board support for that expansion. And so, we're hoping to seek that from you, once we have completed the budget process and know that we would have the resources in place, to be able to expand our middle school offerings to include cross-country for the first time as a competitive sport next year. And so, we're very excited about that. When we look forward, Ms. Moore also has surveyed our students for the second time in a few years. This time, she included the fourth and fifth graders in that surveying, so that we would know what the interests are for those students. And she asked students to identify which of the current sports that we have, they might be interested in, what additional sports they might be interested in that are currently at our high schools but not at our middle schools, and then starting to be forward-thinking and include an opportunity for students to react to things like girls' flag football, which might be on the horizon throughout the state. And so, we're going to be able to use that information to bring information to the board as we begin this expansion process with cross-country perhaps in the next fall, but then build it out from there. And so, we're trying to be very proactive, making sure that the needs and the budgetary and the capacity for this type of expansion is going to be available for our students and our community, according to the wishes of the board. And so, we're ready, ready to move on that. We also did speak briefly about how activities come on board here in Hanover County. By the 15th of this month, any principal who has received an application for a new club at the middle school and the high school level, actually, has to make a determination whether they want to support that or not, and then it will come to you in December for a vote. And so, anything that you vote on in December can start second semester. Most of our middle schools do have their extracurriculars happening during their school day, during flex, so that transportation is not an issue. And that way, students get to dabble in a lot of different things as they move through their middle school career, because we know that that's a really important piece of being a middle schooler, is trying out as many possible things that are on the horizon. And so, those different offerings are really important to develop that in our middle school students. So, looking forward, we look forward to the conversations during the budget process. We'll continue to keep you updated with any progress in MSAC and any additional changes that need to be made there. And if we're ready, we will go ahead and submit to MSAC later this spring, our desire to start cross-country in the fall. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to say, it's amazing news. We've got a lot of runners, and our high schools do so well in cross-country, so it's super to see it starting in middle school, so I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Thank you very much. Okay, so next we have the review of the proposed calendar for 26-27. Thank you, Ms. Dischroon.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Pennykuff, Ian Senior Staff. Tonight, I'm presenting the proposed school calendar for the 2026-2027, I've practiced that, school year. It just doesn't seem possible, does it? A committee comprised of teachers, administrators, parents, and division leaders joined together to create the proposed calendar, and the committee came to 100% consensus when developing this calendar for presentation tonight. The calendar, I'm just going to go through some of the features. It has 177 instructional days. The first day of school is August 24th, and will be a staggered start, as we've had in previous years. It will feel like to our families that we are starting a week later. The last few years, we've started around the 19th, 18th, or 19th. And technically, we are, and it's because Labor Day is very late this year, in the 26th school year. It's actually on September 7th. We are not allowed to open any more than 14 days before Labor Day. So, that puts us back a week, so it'll feel like we're opening later, because technically we are, but we are still following the rules by not opening 14 days, or by opening 14 days prior to Labor Day. Any questions on that? Okay. In my mind, it sounded really good, and then I thought maybe it didn't. So, anyway, we will have a four-day Labor Day weekend for teachers and students. We are required, if we open prior to Labor Day, to have the Friday before Labor Day have schools closed. The end of the first nine weeks will feature professional learning experience in the morning for teachers, and then a clerical day in the afternoon, and it will be a student holiday. We are moving the parent-teacher conferences to November 2nd, which is the day before Labor Day. This year, we had the parent-teacher conferences on the Monday after the end of the first nine weeks, and that was very difficult for teachers to be prepared for those parent-teacher conferences. So, the committee decided to move it, and then we have that four-day weekend for families. Schools will be also closed on Election Day. However, we will be offering professional learning for teachers on that day. However, we will be offering professional learning for teachers on that day in schools that are not serving as voting precincts. Teachers and students in this calendar will have the full week of Thanksgiving off. Winter break is three full weekends and two full weeks, running from December 21st to January 1st. That's the Monday, December 21st is a Monday, to January 1st, which is a Friday. So, it's actually, there's a weekend on either end of that. Spring break aligns with Henrico and Chesterfield and will be March 29th through April 2nd in this proposed calendar. Both winter break and spring break align with other divisions in the region. The other major change to this calendar happens the last week of school. We typically have four early release days the last week of school. Currently, House Bill 1957 states that SOL tests may only be administered during the last 10 days of school, meaning we will have to use that last week of school to administer SOL test at this time, the way that it is written. Excuse me. And that's for grades 7 through 12. So, the committee is recommending that we have that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday as full days so that we can accommodate the testing, remediation if a child requires a retest or qualifies for a retest. So, that is another big change to this calendar. We don't really see a way around it if we have early release days. We're not entirely sure we can get all the testing done and the remediation to support our students. The last day of school is June 4th, and June 7th remains a teacher workday for those teachers who need time to come into the building and complete the closeout for the year. Public comment will open tomorrow morning and will remain open until December 1st. This is an opportunity for our community members to review the proposed calendar and provide input. There's also a companion document that I would highly recommend people read. It is a FAC document, so it has those frequently asked questions regarding the proposed calendar. The calendar committee will reconvene after public comment closes and review the input provided. Once reviewed, the committee will consider and possibly recommend changes based on the feedback we receive. A summary of the input and any recommended changes will be brought back to the board in December for your consideration. Any questions?
We might have a few. I do want to say that, will this go out? Or this information about the public comment, will that go out on Parent Square?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And I do think that we will see positive comments on the last or the days that were, the last days that were usually half-days. I think that was usually a comment to me from parents that they did not appreciate.
In particular, elementary parents because of childcare, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I was in the same spirit of elementary parents and childcare. I've gotten a fair amount of negative feedback on the week off at Thanksgiving because Monday, Tuesday is a working day for most working parents. So, I'm curious, I see it's in here, and I don't really have a dog in the fight. I'll work around it. But for those that may take issue with that, where if we decided to not do that, where would those days off potentially be allocated? Maybe you can't answer that off the top of your head.
I could not answer that off the top of my head, but we would probably look at maybe reinstating a full day at semester change for professional learning in the morning and clerical in the afternoon, and maybe another day. Well, we would put the day somewhere else within the calendar. But no, I couldn't tell you. That would be the calendar committee to make that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Questions? Okay, and this is first read, and you said public comment opens?
Tomorrow morning. Parent Square will include the link to both the FAC document, which really does, I hope people will take time to read that. It talks a little bit more about House Bill 1957, and there's just other information related to the changes in this calendar and then just frequently asked questions that we get. And it will also have the link to the survey, which is three questions, so very quick to respond to.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. And that, it opens tomorrow morning and it closes?
December 1st.
December 1st. Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Dischroon.
You're welcome.
Okay. And I have something to read. Hold on just one second. Got to get there. Okay. Our next agenda item is review of the school board's 2026 legislative agenda. Dr. Schroff and I serve as the board, the school board's legislative representatives and VSAB delegates as we have worked with Mr. Whitley to develop and present this year's agenda to you for first read. We ask that the board members please review the agenda over the next month prior to its adoption in December. As you may know, many of these items are complex, so please reach out in advance to me, Dr. Schroff, or Mr. Whitley with any questions and/or feedbacks you may have. Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Appreciate that. And we next have boundary adjustment update. Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Pennekoff. We are back tonight to talk about the boundary adjustment implementation plan. And you may recall that we last met on this in May of 2025, so what I'm sharing with you is nothing new. It's just a reminder of the decisions that were made at that time. And then Jen Greif will go into our actually phase-in or our communication plan as it's related to this. So, as a reminder, we, the boundary adjustment was approved by the board on May 13th, 2025. It did include a waiver process for the current school year and for next school year. And then for the Giles community, that waiver process extends into the 2027-28 school year. All impacted high school students are allowed to have a consistent high school experience. We're going to talk about that in an upcoming slide. So, for the current year, there was a waiver process to allow for current-year 12th grade, 8th grade, and 5th grade and Giles, one year later, students to remain in their current school. And also, based upon consensus of the school board, we provided direction to allow waivers for students in the class of 2028 to remain at their current high school. So, at the time, they were 9th graders. Last year, 10th graders this year, and so on. So, that means that's one more year that they're allowed to remain in their high school to finish out that high school experience in the same building. And I believe I advanced too quickly. So, actually, for this year, the slide that I skipped, we allowed kindergarteners to, as opposed to starting in an elementary school and then immediately transitioning to a new one. In the current year, there was a waiver process to allow them to start in their new boundary school. And then there was also a waiver process for this year's rising middle and high schoolers to start in their new boundary school. And we did have several students who took advantage of that opportunity to start in that new boundary school in the current year. Then, because I confused you and said the wrong year, for next year is where we talk about allowing those students that would be in their building for the final year to finish out or have a waiver for next year to remain in that building. And then the consensus was to allow next year's 11th graders to stay one additional year to finish in that building. So, now that I've completely confused you, we will move on. In regards to the waiver process, all decisions are based upon available capacity. Also, parent transportation is required if a waiver is granted, and waivers are processed in the order received. Now, I'm bringing up the expert to speak to you about waivers versus variances, and that would be Mrs. Greif.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. The waivers are different from variance requests in that the waivers were specifically designed for the boundary adjustment. So, we use that language just for students who are impacted by the boundary adjustment. Variances are something that is part of our policy and can occur for a host of reasons, but they're actually pretty limited in the way that we accept them. So, it's a pretty strict threshold to gain a variance. And so, the reasons are up there: hardship, medical, change in residency within the county. And so, parents who are looking for a variance, we already have some here and there in the county. Those who are seeking a variance, that is typically done in the spring. It will be reviewed both at the division level and at the school level, and then approved or disapproved. Oftentimes, we request additional documentation from the families to better understand what the hardship or the medical consideration might be. If there's a change in residence, obviously, we would be looking for some documentation related to that residency shift. So, questions about that?
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Seifer?
The variance process. Just wondering why it needs to be in the spring because I was trying to help a family. They weren't able to put the variance in until the spring. It was a situation where they wanted to go to a less crowded school by chance, leaving their more crowded, and by waiting so late, not able to get the classes they wanted. Teachers can't be moved, you know, that kind of thing. So, why couldn't we do the variance process, you know, all in the fall? And of course, for the ones that are, you know, decided later that they need it, have it also in the spring. But certainly, for some of the kids that, you know, say they're 8th graders now and have special circumstances that they would like to be considered, that would, you know, just about be necessary for them to be able to do that in the, you know, in the fall versus waiting to the spring. So, just problems with doing it all in the fall?
Yeah. So, the reason that we do waivers in the fall, which is related specifically to the boundary adjustment, because there is a commitment from the board to allocate class sizes, resources, staffing related to that boundary adjustment, sort of in totality. And so, we want to make sure that we have captured all of the waivers ahead of our staffing considerations, which typically take place in February and March. The variances follow that because the idea of a variance is first needs to adhere to one of these very specific reasons, but then also is reliant upon their being capacity in the space. So, it follows the decision of staffing and resources rather than precedes it.
But if we have the variance before, then we can, you know, make sure we have the capacity for later on rather than, you know, crossing our fingers, if you will, that their variance would get approved.
So, the variance process is something that is very, very limited. So, we're not talking about significant number of students. And so, we don't want to make staffing decisions based upon a few different scenarios that may occur. Also, we re-review variances every year. A student with a variance needs to have appropriate grades, behavior, and attendance to retain that variance for the following year. And so, we can't possibly evaluate that in the fall. We need to wait until the spring.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's update. Thank you very much.
I think there might be another slide.
Okay.
Yep.
Don, do you have more?
This is our communication plan. So, we have already provided notice to the affected 10th graders and are receiving responses from them. In November, we are going to have the data that we need to help us to understand more specifically the impact of the boundary adjustments. In December and January is when we start getting really busy with our communications. And you can see that we will be communicating both broadly and then also narrowly. So, broadly first, and then very narrow to the students that we've identified in 4th, 7th, and 11th grade who will have the opportunity for that waiver process. We're asking that those waivers are back to us by January 31st so that staff can begin doing staffing and allocations in February and March as typical. February, we will allow those notifications to go back to families. If there are any concerns with capacity based upon waivers, we will certainly update the board. And then March through summer of 2026, we will just continue to provide reminders for our families. And then, I believe that Ms. Stone wants to walk through the map tool? Yes.
I'm back. So, on our website, we do have a mapping tool. And we're going to pull it up now and just do, perform a quick demo to show folks that maybe here in the audience are watching how to go through this process to determine what your future boundary may look like. So, if we can Google. And you can find this on our website. If you go to our website under Community and then Boundary Adjustment, there is a link that takes you directly to this map. It's through the Hanover County GIS system. And once we get in there, there we go. We can put in the address, so we'll put 200 Berkeley, which is where we are standing now. Put that in. It's going to bring up, and you see over to the right, it identifies the schools for elementary, middle, and high. So, you can put in any address, and it demonstrates for you there what is your new boundary and what your new schools or same schools may be. But it's a great place to go just to check that. In addition to all this messaging, we'll be sending out to parents and specific messages to those that are impacted. So, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I have one question. I'm going back to my Parent Square. Is this information going out in Parent Square?
It is.
It is. Wonderful. Thank you. I think we reach a lot of parents.
I agree. I agree, and employees.
Yes. Okay. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Mr. Martin?
The waiver process for those 4th, 7th graders, 11th graders, if they have siblings or at the same school, I assume we're allowing them to be a part of that?
We were, as it was proposed and approved last year, it did not include siblings.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I am going to read a statement before we go into public comment. Before we begin with public comment, I would like to share a statement on behalf of the school board. We understand that there are several individuals who plan to speak tonight regarding a matter involving a student and a service dog. While state and federal law, as well as school board policy, limits the sharing of details pertaining to the specific students, we are keenly aware of the claims that have been made publicly regarding access for a family's service dog. And we take exception with the accuracy of the information being shared. Please be assured that the school board works in close partnership with the school division administration to diligently serve and care for our students, and we are sensitive to their unique needs. We work closely with families to identify and provide the appropriate supports to reasonably assist each student so they can achieve their fullest potential. This matter is no exception. While school division staff has met with and proposed solutions to the family, the family has not chosen, has chosen not to send the dog into the school building. To that end, it is very important to note that neither the school board nor school division administration has denied access to this service dog. Simply put, we are not the party responsible for the service dog being kept out of the school. In fact, we have not denied any service animal access to our schools in accordance with school board policy. I will say that again. We have not denied any service animal access to our schools in accordance with school board policy. Rather, we have provided viable options that would allow access to the service dog at school on a daily basis. As always, we will continue to carefully adhere to all school board policies as well as all applicable state and federal laws. Furthermore, it is important to note that as a general matter of practice, we strongly support and encourage parental involvement in our schools' education, in our students' education. They are vital to our ongoing success. We do not, however, support the extended presence of parents or guardians accompanying their children in our classrooms during the instructional day when it can be, when it can reasonably interfere with and fundamentally alter the smooth operation of the learning environment. Again, while there are specific details Again, while there are specific details that we are limited from sharing publicly, we hope this provides our community with greater context and understanding. As always, we are committed to supporting our students as we work to provide positive, safe, and engaging learning environments that are free from as many disruptions and distractions as possible. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Please read the guidelines for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Procedures for public comment. The school board conducts the public comment segment of its meetings to receive information from the general public on matters related to Hanover County Public Schools. Per board policy, the total time allotted for public comment will not exceed 60 minutes. Speakers who wish to address the school board are requested to follow these guidelines. As each speaker is recognized by the vice chair, the speaker is asked to clearly state their name, magisterial district, and the subject of their remarks. Speakers are asked to address their comments to the board and not to the audience. The board requests that the audience refrain from responding to speakers' comments with applause or other audible expressions of approval or disapproval. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the board. Each speaker's elapsed time will appear on the screen. Speakers will also receive notification from the vice chair when time has expired. Although the board does not permit the use of slideshows or other projected materials during this segment, speakers are invited to provide printed copies of such materials to the board. The board requests any person with a complaint about a school division employee to first address the concern to the division superintendent in accordance with board policy. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during this segment. And speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers should be aware, while the board allows speakers to address any matter within the board's purview, speakers will be held legally responsible if they make statements that violate the rights of others, including threatening or defamatory statements made against staff members, students, or parents. The board expresses its appreciation for the public's input and cooperation during this segment of the meeting.
I understand we have a number of speakers here tonight to address accommodations. To streamline this process and make sure that speakers addressing other topics are able to speak, we will hear from speakers not addressing accommodations first. Then we will begin hearing from everyone else who signed up to speak. Thank you.
First on the list is Matt Kreitz, followed by Angie Kreitz. Yes, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Kreitz, and I live in the Ashland District. We are here again tonight because my family is still seeking resolution regarding Charlie and his service dog Wendy, who continues to be prohibited from accompanying him to school with a handler. After I spoke at the last meeting in October, Ms. Welsh, you sent me an email on behalf of the entire board, and I responded just 33 minutes later, ccing all board members, offering to meet and explain the full situation in its totality. And I never received a single response, not one of you responded. And yet, the district has not changed their position on a plan that is both unsafe and unlawful. A plan that would require my 12-year-old son to independently handle his service dog for the entire school day. That is not inclusion, that's negligence. Service dog handling is a full-time responsibility, one that requires constant awareness and control. Expecting Charlie to manage that while also trying to learn and simply be a kid is impossible. It also violates federal law, which requires a service animal to remain under the control of its handler. Charlie is not Wendy's handler. Forcing him to pretend that he is puts him and the entire student population at risk. We've told you this, Canine Companions has told you this. They are the organization that trained and owns Wendy. Charlie's doctor, psychiatrist, and national disability advocates have all put this in writing and told you this, but still nothing changes. And no other solutions are being offered. By refusing to allow a handler, you're denying the service dog itself. Because without a handler, all you have is an empty leash. Our proposed solution is simple, lawful, and costs the district nothing. Allow Charlie's mom Angie to serve as the handler, just as any other parent volunteer inside the school. Or if you don't want a parent inside the classroom for some reason, then aside on one-on-one aid, just like you do for so many other children. Canine Companions has even offered to provide free training for that aid, as well as any backups. It's been months since this started, and every day that it continues, Charlie suffers, and he's being denied access to his education. On Monday, October 20th, I responded to an email from Dr. Penicuff with several follow-up questions and requests for clarifications. That was more than three weeks ago, and I have yet to receive any reply from you or anyone on the staff about this. We're asking for our son to be allowed to go to school safely with the service dog that's trained specifically to support him. We're asking for help. We're asking for answers. And we're asking for you to take action. Again, we have not heard any new proposal, any new suggestions. We haven't heard any viable option of getting this child inside the school building, a school building, any school building. We've offered to send him to any other school that can accommodate him and the service dog in the facilitated capacity. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angela Kreitz, and then Mark Killingstad.
I'm Angie Kreitz, Ashland District, and I'm Charlie's mom. I'm here in response to your denial of Charlie's service dog Wendy with a handler. Every official who has said no to the access Charlie needs has never met Charlie. I'll introduce you. Charlie is intelligent, funny, and kind. He has a quick wit, a big heart, and deep empathy. Charlie's a child who will sacrifice himself out of love and loyalty to others. But Charlie faces excessive barriers. He lives with autism and panic disorder. Autism makes change, noise, and confusion incredibly hard to process. School quickly becomes overwhelming. Combining that with panic disorder is brutal. It's not worry, it is crippling terror. A crowded hallway, a loud voice, a smell, just the sight of a worksheet can trigger flight, fight, or freeze. His mind spins in chaos, his body locks up, and he immediately loses access to his education. Those who said no to his service dog didn't see the years of his teachers carrying him into the school screaming in fear. You didn't see him frozen at his desk for hours at a time or curled in the floor shaking. You didn't see him last year, when he panicked every day for months at school. You were not sitting on the floors with him while he hyperventilated and begged in fear to escape. You didn't see the stress from school ravage his mind so horrifically that he became so physically ill, he missed his last two months of elementary school. You were not there just weeks ago, when panic sent him running out of the school toward a busy road. After years of searching, we finally found what works, his service dog Wendy. She trained to respond to panic with grounding tasks like cover and deep pressure. She can interrupt spiraling thoughts, mitigate autistic obstacles, and guide him through recovery in minutes instead of hours. With Wendy with her handler, Charlie finally found confidence, independence, and a tool to access his education. But you said no to this tool. When you did, you didn't just deny a dog with a handler. You denied Charlie the tool that gives him freedom from debilitating fear. You denied access, you denied progress and dignity. So tonight, I ask, what do you say now?
Thank you. Mr. Killingstad, I apologize, sir. I skipped a person, I apologize, sorry. We're going to go with Rebecca Kreitz next. Mr. Killingstad, you're up after that. I know, you're good. You're a whole lot bigger than me, I appreciate it.
I'm Rebecca Kreitz from the Ashland District, and I'm here for my brother Charlie and the service dog Wendy. Wendy isn't a pet for emotional support, she's a tool. My brother's panic attacks have made his whole life miserable, especially school. When we got Wendy, he started to smile again. But now, his doctor said he can't go to school unless he has Wendy. He has trauma from what your schools put him through. Because of his autism, he goes nonverbal when he gets overwhelmed. Denying Wendy is like denying a child their wheelchair. Charlie needs Wendy to function. Panic attacks are scary, you can't breathe. That's why we have Wendy, to help him not reach that point. All public places in Virginia, including schools, have to follow federal and state law. Virginia and federal law have laws saying all public places are required to let service dogs in. We are Hanover County Public Schools, so I believe this law applies. Also, according to the ADA, Americans with Disability Acts, allergies and fears of dogs are not reason to deny access. The ADA also states that if you are under 18, you are not legally allowed to handle a service dog. Charlie is under 18, therefore, he is not allowed to hold Wendy's leash or give her commands. My parents are allowed to. So if you deny my parents, you also deny Wendy. This situation has taken a toll on not just Charlie, but also my whole family. My dad is making phone calls to people every day. My mom is helping Charlie with his schoolwork. I'm glad I finally get a voice, and I hope it helps. Have you ever heard of an invisible disability? It's something like panic attacks. You can't know someone has them at first glance. He has gotten very overwhelmed many times at his schools. One time, he was so overwhelmed that he ran out of school. It shouldn't reach that point. By denying, by not letting Wendy into the school, you are failing him. Also, I happen to know that at one of your schools last year, you had one dog come in every day and one every Friday. But those belong to adults, of course, so it must be different. People say you're the best school county because you won a few sports games. Is a fake gold medal more important than the health of your students? I don't think so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mark Killingstad. Following Mark is Will. Is Will here? All right, after Will then, again, the third time, Kristen Holtie. After, go ahead, Mr. Killings.
Mark Killingstad, Chico County District, first. Good evening. Thanks for supporting Veterans Day and to my brothers and sisters. Happy birthday for 250 years and moving from there. I'd like to first say thank you, Dr. Penicuff and Mr. Chris Whitley for taking the time to talk to me earlier. Some of you have already heard this, but I'm going to say it again anyway. Apparently, there was an issue because for five years now, I've been telling you there's a problem. For five years, nothing's been done about the problem. Then when I provide you photographic evidence of the problem, people got all kinds of upset. Those pictures that I provided showed no faces. They were taken in public, so there's no expectation of privacy in public. And really, I'm kind of tired of having the same conversations. Most of you, I don't think any of you have been here for the five years. So to say we didn't know, I'm going to say that's not true. It needs to get fixed. I'm tired of telling you this. You just sat there and said how much the board cares about the students. Yet the stinking code of conduct isn't enforced, it's not followed. So either rewrite it now, not after a working group, not after we spend money to have someone come look at something, just a freaking months later say, no, we made a mistake. It needs to get done. Because I'm tired of having these conversations. And I'm sure you're probably tired of hearing me have to come up here and say these things. Or resort to the dramatics. Because I got a young man at home that's got a pair of American flag ranger panties, and the service members know what ranger panties are, and I don't think you want to see that. Although there are quite a few people that are already wearing the equivalent to school on a regular basis in warm weather. So please, if we can get the code of conduct fixed, not next year, not next semester, not three months from now. If we can get it fixed and then enforced, that would be spectacular. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Holtie, followed by Jack Dyer.
Good evening, Chair Welsh, Vice Chair Coleman, Dr. Penicuff, School Board Administration, and public. I hope my Cold Harbor District School Board Representative, Dr. Williams Truff, will be feeling better. I hope he has a fast recovery. I like to resort to, it made me think of this today, the 1966 movie, Clint Eastwood movie, The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. Since I've been participating in or commenting to the school board in the last five years, I've seen a whole lot. I really appreciate the Hanover County School Board, and I am proud to be an American and also want to celebrate the veterans today. They have done so much for our country. It must be given the recognition of fighting for our country and suffering from being away from their families for extended periods of time. There have been many trials and tribulations over the last six years, but the school board is on the correct track and should stay the course. Please do not be distracted or deflected from what has been accomplished over the last few years. Please continue to protect parental rights for the students and have them informed of any issues going on with their child, for it is their child. Males shouldn't compete against girls in sports, nor be in their bathrooms. The girl's safety and security is an issue. I believe in the openness of freedom of speech and being allowed to voice my opinions. I do believe that the youth need to be held accountable and responsible for their wrong actions, no matter what race, white, black, et cetera. When the youth can get away with wrong actions in younger years, then they feel entitlement, no accountability, or no responsibility for such actions when they get older. I'd like to read Psalm 23. At my church on Sunday, it was focused on. "The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; he leadeth me beside the still waters. He restoreth my soul; he leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies; thou anointest my head with oil, my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." I want to thank everyone for your time this evening, and have a happy Thanksgiving season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Dyer. Then after Jack is, forgive me, Tom Huios? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Dr. Penicuff. I've listened to the last board members' meetings. I haven't been here, but I've listened to it. And sad to say, some things never change. But that's where we're at. I'm here to say that basically, we're blessed to have you. We're fortunate that we have you here and Dr. Penicuff to basically be the stewards over our young children, our young kids in school. That they're our kids, they're our children. And that you're here, and you know what the meaning of age appropriate is for those kids. The material that they review, that is taught to them, the behavior of those children, as well as the relationships that these children are subjected to. You are the stewards of those. And you are the stewards of basically knowing what a biological boy is and what a girl is. And that the fact is that basically, they don't belong competing against each other in sports or in the same locker rooms or in the same restrooms. We're blessed to have you and have that sense about you, that moral compass about you. Our Lord knows all, and He has put you in your seats at a specific point in time, and there's a reason for that. You will see those changes coming about in the near future. Know that we are here, the Hanover County citizens, the overwhelming majority of them, are here to support you and back you as we go forward into the next few years. I thank you again for being in the seats you are and knowing the burdens you're going to carry. But know that we're here with you, because it is our young, it is your young that you affect and are the stewards of. Thank you again. I hope each and every one of you have a great Thanksgiving, and God bless you all.
Thank you. If you could, please state your name and magisterial district, and if you're not a Hanover County resident.
Good evening. My name's Tom Huios. I live in Spotsylvania County. And I'm here tonight with my wife Sharon, our son Matt, and his service dog Daisy. We're here in support of Charlie Kreitz and his service dog Wendy. And I can't think of a better way to spend Veterans Day, being a veteran myself, than to fight for his civil rights. Our son Matt received his first service dog in 2006. He is 27 years old. Daisy's his third service dog from K-9 Companions, the same organization that provided Charlie's service dog Wendy. And just like Charlie and Wendy, we are a three-unit service dog team comprised of a disabled person, a trained service dog, and a trained facilitator. The Virginia Department of Education has published guidelines for service dogs in public schools. And I just want to take an opportunity to tell you that I'm very familiar with it, and your policy does not follow it at all. It doesn't resemble it at all. And I'll leave you to explain that. We know a lot about this topic because we went through it ourselves 19 years ago. Matt received his first service dog from K-9 Companions, actually, received his first dog on this day 19 years ago. It's his 19th anniversary. And this is the K-9 Companions' 50th year of providing service dogs for people with disabilities. From 2006 to 2008, Matt endured the same discrimination from Stafford County Public Schools that Charlie is now experiencing. With the help of our state delegate and state senator, we were able to include public entities, including schools, and some other language into the Virginians with Disabilities Act. It was our hope, then, that no other student in Virginia Public Schools would have to face the same discrimination that our son did. After his law was signed by then-Governor Tim Kaine, Matt proudly attended Stafford Public Schools with his service dog and a trained facilitator, I'm going to add, for the next 12 years, from 2008 to when he graduated at age 22 in 2020. For 12 years, they provided a positive example of students using service dogs in Virginia Public Schools. I want to emphasize that, like Charlie's parents, Sharon and I are trained facilitators. To become a facilitator or handler, we were required to attend two weeks of intensive training with our son to learn how to handle the dog and utilize it in a manner to best serve our son. We offered to have our school division send a school aide to attend the same training, but Stafford County declined that offer. I also want to emphasize that when we attended school with Matt and his service dog, we were always very careful to act only in the capacity as facilitator. We, you know, in fact, it would sometimes become a problem with teachers trying to talk to us like we were parents, and we could say, I'm sorry, I'm only facilitating in this capacity right now. Just as you, sitting there, are able to only facilitate, you know, you are wearing your public servant hat right now. You're not wearing your parent hat or your job hat, and you're able to separate those lives. Facilitators are able to do the same. So in conclusion, I hope you'll consult the Department, you know, the Virginia Department of Education guidelines on service dogs in school and update your policy accordingly. And I also hope that you'll allow Charlie to attend school with Wendy and a trained facilitator. It's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Next up is Michael Jerkow. State your name and your magisterial district, and if you're a Hanover County resident or not. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Jerkow. I'm a citizen of Henrico County, and I'm a longtime friend of the Kreitz family. And I'm speaking to you tonight because their son Charlie needs your help. This board's own policy states, "Every child deserves an education based upon fundamental principles of fair and just opportunities for all, and further pledges to take deliberate action to match all students with the resources, tools, and support they need." Well, Charlie is one of those children, and those words are not his reality. The support he needs is simple: Wendy, his service dog. Without her, school isn't hard. It's impossible. I've known the Kreitz family for decades, and that relationship gives me a unique perspective on Charlie and how much Wendy has changed his life. Years ago, during the pandemic, I frequently visited the Kreitz home. Charlie was always around, playing games, saying hello, chatting about football. He was confident. He was social. He could engage with the friends of his parents. But over the last few years, that has changed, and his anxiety became overwhelming. He stopped making appearances when visitors were present, barely leaving their basement. In fact, I rarely saw him over the last three or four years. Best for to the summer, when Wendy entered the picture, Charlie was instantly a different child. The first time I met Wendy was at a Flying Squirrels game, a game where Charlie threw out the first pitch. Yes, the same boy who wouldn't leave his basement for years confidently stood on a mound in front of thousands of people at the diamond. Later that night, Charlie sat next to me, told me all about Wendy. We talked about the game. We issued high fives, and we gave each other hugs. The sweet, confident young man I remember had returned. And since then, every time I have visited family, Charlie is there, acting like a typical 12-year-old with Wendy by his side. I may only represent one perspective, but I hope it illustrates just how life-changing Wendy has been for Charlie. Her presence eases his anxiety in ways nothing else can, and it's heartbreaking to know how debilitating his anxiety is and troubling to see him lose three months of sixth grade simply because you can't find an accommodation for a dog who is arguably better trained and better behaved than most people. So I'll close by again quoting this board's policy, Section 1-1.5, which is titled "Opportunities for All", and pledges to eliminate inequities while providing opportunities for all, as well as to provide additional resources to the neediest schools and students. So tonight, I'm asking you to consider these pledges and to turn your policies into action. Charlie does not need a miracle. He needs a policy applied with compassion, kindness, and common sense. Wendy is not a luxury. She is a lifeline. Denying her is denying Charlie the chance to succeed. Please work with the family, K-9 Companions, to find a solution that allows Charlie to attend school, to stay in school, and to thrive in school. Show this community when you say, "Opportunities for all." You mean it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Kyle Norwood. Next up, Sarah Long.
Good evening, Richard Kyle Norwood. I'm in the Mechanicsville District. I'm here tonight to support the Kreitz family as well. Charlie Kreitz, with a documented disability, has been denied access to public education alongside his trained service dog with a trained, qualified handler. Wendy is not a pet, but the definition of a medically trained service animal. Since being a puppy, her training focused on pressure therapy and interrupting behaviors or physical responses stemming from his disability. These are not comfort gestures. They are clinical, necessary, and life-stabilizing interventions, which require the use of a qualified handler. The access denial of Wendy and a qualified handler in the public, Hanover Public School system is not merely a policy decision, but could also be a question of violation under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA for short, Title II. Under 28 CFR 35.136A, "A public entity shall modify its policies, practices, or procedures to permit the use of a service animal by an individual with a disability." And 28 CFR 35.13B, seven goes further. "A public entity must make reasonable modifications when necessary to avoid discrimination unless doing so would fundamentally alter the nature of the program." Looking at the family tonight, there's nothing that would fundamentally alter a qualified handler in Wendy in the school there. She does not disrupt. She does not endanger. What she does is enable access, equal access to education, which is the very purpose of public schooling. This issue has been tested in the court before. In Delron Township School District in 2022, a New Jersey school district was found to have violated the ADA after refusing to allow a student's service dog on campus. The Office for Civil Rights determined that denying access created an unnecessary barrier and failed to provide equal opportunity to participate in school programs. The district was required to revise its policies and allow the service animal full access. In Fry versus Napoleon Community Schools in 2017, the U.S. Supreme Court affirmed that parents can pursue ADA in Section 504 claims when school actions, such as denying a service animal with a qualified handler, amounted to discrimination independent of educational services. The court recognized that access itself, not just academic progress, is a civil right. So these rulings make it clear that school systems can't pick and choose which disabilities to accommodate. Refusing a trained service dog, along with everything that comes with it, a qualified handler specifically, tells a student their needs don't count the same as others. And that goes against the principles of fairness and inclusion set out in the ADA. So tonight, I pray this board will reverse course to make the easy, the right, the godly decision to reaffirm the commitment to equal access to education, to welcome Wendy as a vital asset to Charlie's further education. Thank you for your time. God bless you and your families.
Thank you. Sarah Long.
Hello, I'm Sarah Long. I am an over-30-year resident of King's Charter in the Ashland District. I'm a neighbor of the Kreitz. All four of my children graduated from Atlee High School, and I learned through that experience that adjusting to sixth grade can be a monumental task for any student. Rules can help activities operate smoothly, but sometimes rules stifle successful solutions. Excuse me. According to the 2023 J-LARC study, Virginia uses the standards of quality formula to determine investments in our education system. And I'm disappointed to learn that using the SOQ formula, Virginia's school divisions receive less K-12 funding per student than a 50-state average and less than three of our bordering states. Virginia receives 14% less for average students and 16% less for special needs students. Wendy is owned and trained by K-9 Companions. These dogs are trained in an intensive, two-week curriculum and have ongoing K-9 Companion training and graduate support. The dogs must be able to perform specific tasks that mitigate the applicant's disability. I've known Charlie for many years. The calming presence, pressure from Wendy helps him to focus his intelligence and guide his path to apply his talents to the benefit of all society. Charlie can become the next John Forbes Nash Jr., the next Temple Grandin, Helen Keller, Stephen Hawking. In order to be successful, Charlie needs the skills of a trained therapy dog working under the guidance of a trained handler. By creating a successful path for him, we all benefit. I'm asking for you to use your special training and your prerogative to develop a special, successful path to help Charlie reach his potential.
Thank you. Next up, Jackie McCool. You could please state your magisterial district and whether you're a Hanover County resident or not.
Yes, my name is Jackie McCool. I'm from Midlothian, Virginia. I am not a resident. Good evening. My name is Jackie McCool, and I'm a volunteer with the Old Dominion Chapter of K-9 Companions. I have been a puppy raiser for this organization for 11 years, and my family has raised eight dogs for them. I'm here tonight to speak in support of allowing Charlie and his highly-trained service dog Wendy to attend school as part of a facilitated, three-unit team. As you may be aware, K-9 Companions is a nationally acclaimed nonprofit organization that has spent over 50 years providing expertly-trained service dogs to children, adults, and veterans with disabilities. They are leaders in the field, setting the standard for training, placement, and follow-up support for their graduates. The organization currently has 744 service dog facilitator teams across the country, including many placed as facilitated teams where a child is partnered with a service dog and a trained adult facilitator. This is not a new experimental concept. It's a well-established, nationally-recognized model that ensures the safety, well-being, and success of both the student and the dog. The facilitated handler's role is not to interfere with the child's education, but to support and maintain the service dog's performance and care throughout the day. A 14-year-old boy, no matter how mature, cannot be expected to independently manage the care, handling, and behavioral standards of a highly-trained service dog while simultaneously focusing on his own studies. That expectation is unrealistic, contrary to K-9 Companion standards and agreement for placement. To separate Charlie and the facilitator would be to separate the child and facilitator would be to violate the terms of K-9 Companion's contract and undermine the very safeguards that make this partnership successful. Denying the presence of the facilitator effectively denies this child the full benefit and accessibility that the service dog was intended to provide. This is not about making exceptions to rules. It's about a child's right to equitable access to education and the proven support model that makes that possible. Allowing the full, three-unit team to attend school honors the spirit of inclusion and the principles of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ensuring that this student can thrive both academically and emotionally with the support he's been given. So tonight, I urge you to follow the lead of countless other school districts across the nation, trust the expertise of K-9 Companions, and allow this facilitated team to be together in school as they were trained and intended to be. I thank you for your time and your commitment to doing what's right for Charlie and for students who may benefit from service dog partnerships in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Matt Huios.
I'm speaking on Matt's behalf. This is Matt Huios. We live in the Spotsylvania County District. Matt wants you all to know that 19 years ago today, Matt received his first service dog from K-9 Companions. In that, we are, just like Charlie, right, Matt, a three-team party. In 2006, when we tried to have Matt's dog come to school, he was denied his dog. For two years, we fought with it. Luckily, Matt put up a good fight, and through our state senator and delegate, we were able to sign into law Matt's Law, HB 214. In this law, not only was it allowed to make sure that public schools could not deny service dogs in school, it also acknowledged a three-team unit. Matt, his service dog, and his trained facilitator. By not allowing Charlie his By not allowing Charlie, his dog, and his facilitator to attend school, Matt wants you all to know that you are denying his rights. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next up, Pamela Faulkner. Please state your magisterial district and whether you're a Hanover County resident or not. Thank you.
I'm Pamela Faulkner. I'm not a Hanover County resident, I'm a Henrico County resident. I am a nurse practitioner, retired. I've worked in rehab medicine, I've worked in psychiatry. I've seen positive outcomes from human-animal relationships, mostly dogs, even within the hospitals that I've worked. I also have a son who has autism, and he would have benefited from this situation. He instead had an aide from sixth grade on. He had three different aides, but anyway, that would have been the same as having a handler with him. Today, he's 36 years old and has a mental health disorder, and I don't know where he is. I think that if he had something like a service dog, that would have been maybe lifesaving. So I don't know this family, but I've raised a K9 companion dog. She did not make it because the standards for these dogs are top-notch. You see this one over here, I'm sure you'll care about, that one? That's Ivy. That dog is better than my dog ever was. But we take these dogs back, and we get a new one. And my friends here have had several dogs. This was my first dog, but I'll try again later. So I'm here to support this family, K9 Companions, which is an excellent organization. It's not a two-week training, it's a two-year training. We get these dogs at eight weeks, and we bring them up for 18 months, and we turn them over to K9 Companions with not any expectation of getting this dog that we've trained back. That dog is in three months of training. If they pass that, they go to another three months of training. And then they are paired very carefully with their trainer, with their recipients. And that might not even work out. They might, the two weeks might be for naught, and they'll do it again. They're finally paired with someone, and that's permanent. They're owned by K9 Companions. If they're mistreated, they return to K9 Companions. I'm sure there's other things that people can say that I can't say, but please listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tommy Kuhn. This is Ivy. I'm from Colony Heights, Virginia. Ivy's our eighth dog that we've raised. I'm also a parent of a disabled child, an adult now, that is at work, and he's doing what everybody else should be doing, making a living. In 2013, we raised our first dog. We met a young man, his name was Frankie Cavelli. Very similar to what you see today, and this is happening more and more and more often. This isn't the first time you're going to deal with this. If you stick around, there's going to be more coming because of the disability awareness that you guys were talking about, right? Once you learn more about things and how to deal with things, people are going to step up and find breakthrough-type things you can do. Frankie, in 2013, got a dog that we raised, not we, but our area here, got a dog named Victory. He had autism, he had fight or flight, he had real bad anxiety, and when we met him, he got Victory. Two years later, when we brought our next dog up there, he had a booth. And on the booth, it had collars for dollars. He was raising money for K9 Companions. He was making collars and keychains and stuff like that. And the amazing thing in two years is that we heard him on an interview in Long Island, New York, talking about when he used to have autism. These dogs do amazing things, and it baffles me that somebody would take the tool that is already proven, that we know it works, that it already works for the individuals, it's been proven, and you take that tool away to make it harder for someone to be successful, in my opinion. I see all you are on your computers. What would you be without them? The parent thing you've been talking about all night long that is so successful? Take it away, where would you be? It's harder. This is nothing more than a tool. This is a dog, but it is a tool for somebody to be able to live independently. This organization, from the ground up, nonprofit, we put our money into these dogs, they put their money into these dogs, and they get them for free. They know what they're doing. This individual's going to be successful. We just got to let him be and let him use the tools that he has. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Angela McNally. Angela McNally. Lastly, Susan Parikh. Susan Parikh. Madam Chair, that's the last person.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move into our action agenda, and we have Ms. Hahn coming up to talk about or to discuss consideration for the proposed policies, revised policies.
Yes, so these should look familiar to you. You saw them at the last meeting for First Read. No changes have been made to the policies. However, we have made some edits to the regulation that you have in your pocket, your packet, excuse me. 7-2.1B, the regulation that addresses compulsory attendance. We received some feedback from some folks, and what we have done is we've provided further edits to clarify disclosure of information as it relates to families who homeschool their children. This was something that was brought to us both by families and a recommendation by the VSB. So that has been edited, but everything else has remained the same. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I would ask that these be adopted.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Hahn? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the proposed revised policies, 4-1.2, threat assessment teams, 4-2.1, safety of school facilities, 4-2.2, school crisis, emergency management and medical emergency response plans, and 6-3.14, substance abuse education as presented.
Can we add the regulation to that, too, please? It's a 7-2.1 compulsory attendance. It's not on there. It's in your book. I'm sorry. That was my fault. That's correct.
And I also move 7-2.1 compulsory attendance.
2.1B.
7-2.1B.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table by Mr. Seifert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I have a second for the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. We next have, thank you, Ms. Stone, you're going to come talk to us about the Atlee High School baseball field donation.
Yes, good evening again. The head baseball coach for Atlee High School has requested consideration of approval of a fundraiser for the creation of a garden behind the baseball field bleachers. It would include a plaque memorializing a former player, Garrett Kirby, who passed in 2019. Dr. Wheeler supports this project. We have a visual here, and we are coming before you because Policy 4-3.8 requires the school board approval for any commemorative or memorial items such as trees or plaques. And so while it's a regulation, typically, accepting donations is part of a regulation, this one pushes into a policy because it includes that memorial. And so we're here to seek approval tonight. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Do we want, we need to regurgitate that? Okay.
I can go again.
So this is, we are, it's a donation in honor of a previous player.
It's a fundraiser, a donation. Typically, that's approved by the superintendent, but whenever there's a desire to include a memorial or a plaque, that's when it pushes to a policy and requires school board approval. And so they're looking for this approval before they start the fundraising activity.
Great. Okay, thank you. Do I have, so we don't have any questions for Ms. Stone? Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the Atlee High School baseball field donation as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes. That is all for our action agenda, and you have your fiscal status report and your facility usage report in your packets. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, then we have, Dr. Penicuff, do we have, oh, our calendar events, would you like to speak on those?
Yes, thank you. We have a special work session in JEC, Joint Education Committee, with our Board of Supervisors coming up later this week on Thursday. We also have our VSB, Virginia School Board Association Conference, November 19 through 21st, and several members of our team will be there. And then, in more exciting, wonderful news, our next school visits will be December the 11th and December the 12th.
Thank you, Dr. Penicuff. Do we have anything to add to the calendar? Okay. And, Dr. Penicuff, we also, what are our next, for our next school board meeting? Do we have topics?
We do. We will bring the school calendar back, along with any additional information we have. If Mr. Whittenhoff is ready, we'll bring the results of the survey for convocation back, and our student organizations and clubs that have been submitted will come for your review and approval in December.
Thank you, Dr. Penicuff, and it looks like we are at the end of our meeting. So, Mr. Martin?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn our November 11, 2025, meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any discussion? Of course not. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.